Good job, buddy.
Oh, she's a cutie, too.
For those of you who haven't been to a board meeting before, it's tradition to have some young kids in the audience gavel us in. And I am taking an opportunity tonight to let my two favorite young people do it. I'd like to call to order the organizational meeting of the Board of Education of Homewood School District 153 for May 5th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bosch?
Here.
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 Here. We have some Willow Special Olympic athletes and peer partners that we want to recognize tonight.
Yes. It's always, always very exciting to be able to recognize our Special Olympians. A few months ago, we had one group in, and now we have our Willow Special Olympians. So at this time, I'd like to call up two of their coaches, Kendra Duncan and Shannon Cotter, and they will introduce the rest of their team.
Hello. So besides Shannon and myself, we have four other coaches that I would like to introduce. So Colleen Spain. Kayla McLaurin. Maddie Buttsback. And Katie Schultz. So I will introduce first our young athletes. If you are here, young athlete, please come up to the front. So our young athletes are Harper Simpson. Ty Noah Watson. Grace Salisbury. Trey Sanders. Ra Asim Rhimes. Mariah Nelson. Logan McKeon. John Donovan. Ashton Freeman. And Lionel Craddock. And we were very fortunate to have 14 second-grade peer partners to help us out. So they are Miles Elmore. Faith Perkins. Charlotte Charlie Robinson Organic. Finian Bush Emmarts. Lila Vanderwhite. Leve Roundtree. Isabella Denoso. Justice Jackson. Victoria Garcia. Philly Ireland. Chase Johns. Vincent Johns. Lucy Williams. And Will Opiola. So we are very proud of all of our young athletes and their peer partners.
All right, Special Olympians, if we could come over in front of this big wall, we're going to get a picture with all of you, okay? So let's go over here on this side. Right over here.
And I want to also add my congratulations to our athletes, their helpers, the coaches, and the parents. None of this happens without parental involvement, and we really appreciate you making sure that your kids have this opportunity. So before we move on with the agenda, I have a few comments. It's hard for me to believe that 33 years has passed since I became a school board member. My hope has always been to leave our corner of the world a better place, which will leave the world a better place because we are sending caring students who know how to learn and think critically into the world. I've always known that my work here will never be complete. It's now someone else's to continue. I've sat at this table with remarkable people who volunteered their time to create the very best possible learning environment for our students. We have made difficult, sometimes heart-wrenching decisions, and have always cared deeply about getting it right. The easy decision is not always the right decision, and this board has never been afraid to choose the right decision. Our conversations have been thoughtful, cordial, and meaningful. We respect and listen to each other. I've learned so much from each person that I've served with. It takes courage to sit here month after month, year after year, and do the hard work that being on a school board requires. Each board member is your neighbor, working on behalf of taxpayers, students, and staff to balance learning, finances, and whatever crazy events this world throws at us. I feel truly lucky to have served on this board where courage, respect, and caring reign. We have laughed together and cried together. I want each of you who I have served with, both recently and over the years, to know that it has been a privilege to share this experience with you. I have had the good fortune to work with four incredible superintendents: Jim Mahan, Barbara Ansey, Dale Mitchell, and Scott McAllister. Their leadership has been inspiring and thoughtful. They led us through challenges with grace and kindness. I am a better person because I have worked with you. I value you and feel so fortunate that I was able to create something incredible, especially with both Dale and Scott. Our staff has spent 33 years making me look really good. I hope that each of you know that I have always been your biggest cheerleader. I gave you standing ovations on your best days. I hope you heard them. And I worried about you and cried with you on your tough days. The lengths you are willing to go to for your students' success inspires me. The respect and love you have for your colleagues make our schools better every single day. My family has walked this journey with me. They have laughed with me and at me. They have learned that there are many things that I just won't share or talk about, and they've respected that and not asked. Erin was in first grade, and Jeffrey was in preschool when I first came on the board. Your experiences informed my decision-making and improved our schools. Jeffrey OT is no longer held in a closet. They brought amazing daughters into my life, Kristin and Laura, who have also taught me so much about what kids need in school and the very real challenges of being a teacher. It's not always easy being the child of a board member. I hope you think it was worth it. Steve, I appreciate all you've done for me and our family so that I could follow my passion, more than anyone you've had to put up with the challenges and moods this volunteer gig has occasionally put me in. You've been Shelley Marks's husband for years. Thank you. I couldn't have done it without you by my side, and you can hold on to the remote on Monday nights. Jonah and Ava, my hearts, you are too young to know it yet, but the schools that you will go to one day are better than they've ever been, and they're going to keep getting better. They're ready for you to be a successful student. To my board, each one of you, I'm proud of what we've accomplished collectively. Keep making decisions that put kids first, and everything will fall into place. Thank you for trusting me to lead you. All right, it says on my agenda, which it did not say until today. I noticed you changed things. A proclamation presented by Steve Anderson, past president of the HF High School District 233 School Board.
Thanks, Jim. First of all, Shelley, I'm not going to give a long speech because that was... You already made me cry at my meeting the other day, so I'm not going to try to make you cry at yours. But Ron, Christine, Alex, Jim, Broderick, and Ashante, and Scott, and Dale, you guys know how wonderful a human being this is. She's the first call whenever I was in trouble. She was the first text whenever she knew there was trouble up at HF. She was always there for me in my corner when things weren't necessarily as organized and thoughtful as maybe they could have been. Is that a nice way to say it? She taught me what a good board should be, and she taught me how functional... what the word "functional" meant. And she taught me how to take that and show others sort of the right direction. And for that, I will be forever thankful. You changed my life and my direction, and you gave me 18 years of, you know, community service that I didn't think or see coming, and I'm thankful to you for that. And tonight, I'm here to present, from Homewood-Flossmore High School, a proclamation, or as Lisa calls it, the "whereas." And apologize, but with 32 years, there's a lot of "whereas's." So I'm going to read them all rather quickly if I can, but the proclamation reads... Am I holding this too close? Is this really loud, or is it just me? Am I good? All right, so "whereas." Shelley Marks has dedicated 32 years... 33 years? We'll amend this. 33 years of extraordinary service to the Homewood School District 153 Board of Education. Whereas Shelley Marks honorably served as board president for the last 22 years... Close enough. Whereas Shelley Marks skillfully led the passing of three referendums, each with over 70% approval, helping maintain fiscal responsibility. Whereas Shelley Marks was awarded the Thomas Lee Burrows Award in 2011 by the Illinois State Board of Education. Whereas Shelley Marks prioritized the high-quality opportunities and resources for staff and students of Homewood School District 153. Whereas Shelley Marks provided the utmost concern for the families of Homewood and the surrounding communities, particularly in navigating the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas Shelley Marks graciously valued the advancement of children's education throughout Homewood Schools. Whereas Shelley Marks has spent the last three decades committed to advocating for public education in her community through her volunteerism. Whereas Shelley Marks will forever be acknowledged as a fierce agent of positive change for Homewood youth and their families. And whereas Shelley Marks has extended a deep congratulations on her retirement with sincere gratitude and appreciation from the Board of Education of Homewood-Flossmore Community High School District 233 and its administration and staff. Signed by the seven current board members and Dr. Scott Wakely. Shelley, thank you.
Okay, I can't see a thing on my computer. Someone change the screen. We have approval of resolution 50525.
Mr. Secretary, if you could, please.
Resolution. In honor of Shelley Marks. There are several "whereas's." Whereas Shelley Marks has served District 153 with distinction as a member of the Board of Education for 33 years and for the last 22 years as its president. Whereas throughout her long tenure, Shelley Marks has proven herself to be an incredible advocate, leader, and visionary for students, staff, and families. Whereas Shelley Marks has devoted thousands of hours during her long tenure to ensuring the quality, financial health, and ethical administration of the school district and its schools. Whereas Shelley Marks has devoted countless hours more to attending school-related events, cheering on students and staff, securing additional funds and resources for the schools, and listening to community residents around town. Whereas Shelley Marks models the very best in servant leadership, serving her community without compensation, but always with joy and positivity. Whereas Shelley Marks has fostered an atmosphere of collaboration and trust between school, district administration, and staff by being a highly visible and very approachable presence in our schools. Whereas Shelley Marks never shied away from doing the right thing for students, even when it was hard. Whereas Shelley Marks reassuring positivity, steady resolve, and constant professionalism were essential to the creation of grade centers in the passes of three desperately needed funding referendum. Whereas Shelley Marks leadership was key to the school district's consistency in education and compassionate support of students, staff, and families during the COVID-19 crisis. Whereas Shelley Marks is recognized throughout Illinois as an outstanding educational leader, earning the title of Thomas Lee Burrows Outstanding School Board President of the Year in 2011 by the Illinois State Board of Education. Whereas District 153 has been enriched beyond measure by Shelley Marks' balanced energy, positivity, kindness, compassion, and principal example. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of Homewood School District 153 recognizes Shelley Marks' achievements and contributions to the district and to the greater Homewood-Flossmore community, expresses its deepest appreciation for those contributions, and wishes her every happiness in all the years to come. Presented the fifth day of May 2025. Cinco de Mayo, by the way.
Thank you all.
Real quick, I'd like to make a motion, move to... move upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approved resolution number 50525. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all very much. It's much appreciated. So if I could have Broderick and Christine and Becky come on up here with me, and this is pretty much my last final official act.
Yeah.
All right, so first of all, congratulations to the three of you, and thank you for stepping up to serve our community. You are all going to add so much to our board and make sure that the tradition of excellence continues. I could not be leaving if I didn't know that the three of you were going to be sitting at this table, so thank you. All right. Here's what you're going to do. You're going to read this together. Where it says name, you say your own name.
I, Broderick Booth. I solemnly affirm that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office, member of the Board of Education, Homewood School District 153, in accordance to the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further affirm that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that the board has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. I shall foster the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set its course for the Homewood School District 153. I shall assist in establishing a structure and environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their max...
Congratulations. And we have one more thing, and it is our tradition for the board, all of the board, to read... The Code of Conduct for Board Members. And we'll just start down here, and each person can say one thing, and then just go down the row.
As a board member of my local Board of Education, I shall do my utmost to represent the public interest in education by adhering to the following commitments. I shall represent all school district constituents honestly and equally, and refuse to surrender my responsibilities to special interests and partisan political groups.
I shall avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety or property which could result from my position, and shall not use my board membership for personal gain or publicity.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a board meeting.
I shall take no private action that might compromise the board or administration, and shall respect the confidentiality of privileged information.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board.
I shall be involved... I shall be involved and knowledgeable about not only local education concerns, but also about state and national issues.
In addition, I shall encourage my Board of Education to pursue the following goals: the development of educational programs which meet the individual needs of every student, regardless of ability, race, sex, creed, or social standing.
The development of procedures for the regular and systemic evaluation of programs, staff performance, and board operations to ensure progress toward educational goals and fiscal goals.
The development of effective school board policies which provide direction for the operation of the schools and delegate authority to the superintendent for their administration.
The development of systemic communications with... which ensure that the school board, administration, staff, students, and community are fully informed, and that the staff understands the community's aspirations for its schools.
The development of sound business practices which ensure that every dollar spent produces maximum benefits. At this point, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, consent agenda item. It is the election of the board president, vice president, and secretary. So first, do we have any nominations for board president?
I would like to nominate Mr. Alex Bosch for the position of president of our board.
I second that.
Any questions or comments? Any other nominations? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want to oppose? All right, motion carries. Next, we have a motion to nominate the board's vice president.
I move that Broderick Booth be nominated as our vice president.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Do you want to oppose? Motion carries. Broderick Booth is our vice president. Last, for our board secretary, is there a motion for our board secretary?
I nominate Ron Zinnerman.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to oppose? All right, motion carries. Moving on to the next agenda item, nomination of our board recording secretary. Do we have a motion?
I move that Mary Kay Dunn be nominated as board secretary, recording secretary.
Is there a second? A second, Deb.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. With that, we have a motion to adjourn the organizational board meeting.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This meeting is adjourned. We'll take a few minutes, and then we'll move on to our regular board meeting for the evening. All right. No, I'm not on. Hello, can you hear me? All right, there we go. All right, I'd like to call to order the regular board meeting, the regular meeting of the Board of Education of Homewood School District 153 for Monday, May 5th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Here.
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 Still here.
Here.
Here. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have approval of the minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting of April 7th, 2025. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. Dr. McAllister, future dates?
I cannot believe it is May already. We have an early release day on Wednesday, another early release day, May 23rd. Kindergarten parents, May 15th is our parent night. So make sure all of our kinderparents, upcoming kindergarten students, show up on May 15th to find out everything about being a Willow Wildcat. Memorial Day, of course, and then the highlight for all of our 153 kiddos who are graduating, James Hart graduation will be at HF High School on Wednesday, May 28th. That's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any presentations?
No, we do not.
Okay. Next, we have audience participation. At this point, anyone in the audience may come up to address the Board on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. If you could please state your name and your address, please.
Sherri Foster, 2715 Knollwood in Hazelcrest.
Alright, thank you.
This past year, I have devoted my full attention to advocating for my daughter's education, even pausing my own career to do so. I have found the process deeply frustrating and disheartening. Despite my consistent efforts and direct communication with my daughter's team, I was ultimately compelled to spend hundreds, if not thousands of dollars, to hire a professional advocate. It is disturbing that this advocate, thanks to her 20 years of experience in special education, was able to extract clear answers and see through evasive responses, something that I was not afforded as a parent, in front of an ISBE mediator. This speaks to a larger systemic issue within the district's Special Education Department. Whoever assumed the roles of Superintendent and Head of School Board must prioritize reforming this department. The current system is inequitable, biased, and fails families, especially those without the financial means to secure an advocate. It is unacceptable that these families must settle for inadequate services for their children. One particularly troubling decision that was the placement of an underqualified substitute teacher, previously a computer lab assistant, in a specialized education role. She was not provided with proper training, support, or even a curriculum. As a result, students received busy work, and I received no progress regarding my child's development throughout the year. This setup not only set the teacher up to fail, but most importantly failed our children. At a recent Board meeting, a parent shared her positive experience with the Special Ed Department but omitted the fact that she too had to hire an advocate to reach that outcome. This highlights the core issue: access to equality and access and equality. A functional system should not require professional intervention in order to work properly. What we need is transparency, accountability, and consistent communication. Imagine if your own child were in my daughter's place. Would you accept these conditions? Would you tolerate vague answers, lack of oversight, and ill-prepared staff? The same as if you brought your child to my emergency department in distress. You would hope the first person you'd encounter knows what they're doing in that emergency instead of wasting time that could impair your child's life. Our children deserve better. We all do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Is there anyone else here that would like to come up and address the Board this evening? If not, we'll move on to the next agenda item, responses to questions or concerns raised by the audience at previous meetings.
Yeah, there've been several people who came to the last meeting. I have all the names here. If you were at previous meetings, you were able to hear the concerns that were expressed. Virtually all of these individuals have been spoken to either by me or one of our administrators, and there are things that we are working on which the public will see more in a more visible way, I guess, with the start of next school year. So I think I can summarize all those comments with that. Just stay tuned, there's more coming.
Thank you. Is there a Board, I'm sorry, are there any reports of Board committees or meetings since our last meeting? Next, we'll move on to consent agenda items. First one is...
Mr. Bosch, Superintendent's Report.
Oh, oh, I missed that.
That's okay.
Any better readers?
The only reason I want to make sure, Marilyn Thomas, where are you seated, Marilyn? Could you do me, could you stand up, please? Can we all wish Marilyn a really big happy birthday?
Happy birthday!
Happy birthday, Marilyn. I won't tell you how I found that out, but I just, I just said I know Marilyn will not want this public accolade, but nonetheless, happy birthday.
You realize she's not writing favorably about your next slide.
There went the press coverage. Registration, we have been open for next year's registration, so please, parents, if your child is going to be in District 153 next year, please make every effort to get into the parent portal and get your students signed up. We have a lot of end-of-the-year activities. May is always a very busy month with music, all of our music programs, end-of-year activities, including graduation, which I just mentioned, on May 28th. So we're looking forward to a wonderful last month of school.
Thanks. Thank you. Sorry about that. We'll move on to the consent agenda items. First one is authorize the chief school business official to pay the usual and customary bills for June 2025. Any questions, comments from the Board? Thank you. Moving on to the next item, approval of ISBE discipline improvement plan.
Yeah, I'll just make a brief comment about that. The State Board requires that districts who are in the top 20% statewide of disproportionality, is the term they use, to create a report that we will work on to address this disproportionality in discipline rates. So it's, the details are in the report that you can see, but we look forward to working with our administrative teams at all three buildings to make improvement in this area.
Any questions? Moving on to next item, approval of agreement with ISC4 and RISE for the 2025-2026 school year.
As a member of South Cook, we are part of the Intermediate Service Center, which is located on Joe Ohr Road. They have a regional safe school called RISE. If we wish to choose, to send a student to RISE, we have to have an signed agreement in place. So it doesn't obligate us to send students there, but we cannot do so if we don't have this in place. So it's a formality that we do every year.
Any questions from the Board? Any comments? Moving on to the next item, approval of the disposal of outdated curriculum items.
You can see several items on the form. As we adopt new curriculum, we get rid of the old. It's merely housekeeping, which we all need to do in our own homes.
Yep, for sure. Moving on to Personnel Report.
Personnel Report is very lengthy. I encourage you to look at all of the activity happening. Draw particular attention to the bottom. We are closing several positions. We've talked extensively over the course of the school year about the need to downsize our staff, and you can see several of the positions that we are closing as a result of those discussions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Board? Alright, moving on to the approval of the consent agenda items.
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented in Items 7A, 7B, 7C, 7D, and 7E.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to our Action Agenda items. The first one is the second payment of April 2025 bills and the first payment of May 2025 bills. Are there any questions that haven't been answered from the Board? Is there a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education authorize the second payment of April 2025 bills and the first payment of May 2025 bills in the amount not to exceed $2,621,951.21. Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Next item, accept the tentative amended budget for FY 2025.
Dr. Trinberger, if you could come up and speak to that?
Good evening. When we adopted the budget back in the fall, we didn't anticipate the ability to sell life safety bonds to pay for our Willow Roof project. We learned about two weeks ago that DCG Roofing is going to be sending their first invoice to be paid at the June Board meeting. So this requires us to amend the budget because we didn't have any authorized expenditures in our life safety fund. So the administration is asking the Board to put a tentative amended budget on the 30-day display, and this budget incorporates the proceeds from the life safety bond sale on our revenues and the initial payment to DCG Roofing and the expenditures. We also did receive our property tax relief grant from the State of Illinois in the amount of $1,427,503 for the property tax relief grant, so we added it in for revenue. And we removed some operating expenditures from the operations and maintenance fund that was going to be for the first installment of the Willow Roof. So the tentative amended budget now has a operating surplus of $2,026,823 as a result of the property tax relief grant and the moving of the expenditure from the operations and maintenance fund to the life safety fund for the first installment of the Willow Roof. The administration recommends placing the tentative budget on display and holding a hearing at the June 9th, 2025 Board meeting to adopt a tentative amended budget.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Board?
No.
If not, do we have a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education accept the tentative amended budget for fiscal year 2025 as attached.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Next item is accept the bid for the sports complex floor replacement.
So the administration worked with Studio GC to develop specifications for the replacement of the James Hart Sports Complex floor. We looked at some samples of some different materials, and we also shared those materials with the Park District. The materials and installation are being purchased under the Sourcewell Joint Purchasing Agreement, and the cost of the project will be shared with the Homewood-Flossmore Park District. And the administration recommends approval of the contract with Diversify Pro in the amount of $259,630 to complete this work.
Any questions from the Board? Okay, thank you. A motion, please.
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education accept the bid from Diversify Pro to replace the floor in the sports complex in the amount of $259,630.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Next item, approval of extra payment for coaches.
Yes, the last three years, we have asked for an extra stipend varying from $100 to $500 for our coaches. As a result of buses running late and activities starting later, our coaches are spending hours, multiple hours additional in the season as opposed to what they did when these stipends were created. So this is a compensation for our coaches for the time they're spending with our kids away from their families.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the Board? If not, do we have a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent that the Board of Education approve extra compensation for coaches in the amount not to exceed $7,000.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Definitely.
Yes. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, approval of memo of understanding regarding vacation days for 12-month staff.
As we look at compensation in ways other than salary, given our financial restraints, we reviewed 260-day employee contracts, and if you are starting off as a brand-new building secretary, 12-month secretary, custodian, tech person, or district office staff, you get 10 vacation days a year out of 260. So I wanted to offer an additional compensation to those workers specifically. So I'm recommending the addition of two additional vacation days for those people who are in that category, 12-month non-administrative staff.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the Board? If not, do we have a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent that the Board of Education approve the memo of understanding regarding a specific retiring employee's compensation.
Roll call.
Missed that one? I'm just trying to rush to the festivities. Sorry, Shelley. There's a party to be had. Alright, sorry. Moved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent at the Board of Education, approve the MOU regarding the vacation day allotment for 12-month staff.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Let's see here, moving on to the next item, approval of memo of understanding regarding a specific retiring employee's compensation.
Yeah, this is a memorandum of understanding with the union specifically for one HEA member. There was a payroll error. The employee will receive all their compensation, albeit paid at a different time than what we had originally envisioned. So that's merely what the language says, is that the payments entitled to the employee will be shifted on the calendar.
Any questions or comments from the Board? If not, do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Why not? They don't repeat. I'll read again. Moved upon the recommendation, oh, thanks, Booth. Moved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, the Board of Education approve the memo of understanding regarding a specific retiring employee's compensation.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Employment.
Yes, excited to bring to you for hiring Michael Haywood, custodian floater, Larry Chrisler, PE teacher at Churchill, Janet Caldenaro, PE assistant at James Hart, and Heather Mann McGoldrick, a psychologist at Willow. Sykes are really hard to find, so we're excited to get a school psych at Willow.
Alright, any questions or comments from the Board? If not, do we have a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the Administration at the Board of Education approve the employment of Michael Haywood, effective April 24th, 2025, Larry Chrisler, Janet Caldenaro, and Heather Mann McGoldrick, effective August 18th, 2025, upon the terms recommended by the Superintendent conditioned only upon receipt of satisfactory criminal background report and evidence of proper legal qualifications for the position to be filled. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Discussion items. Are there any discussion items this evening?
There are none.
Alright. Mr. Secretary, are there any written communication to the Board?
No.
Thank you. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries.
Alright, thank you for coming, everybody. Have a great night.